Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of today's agenda.
Make approval of today's agenda.
I'll second that.
Seconded, any discussion? Are you none? All in favor say aye.
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 Before we do the minutes, do you have everybody up there? Angela?
I'm assuming Marion is Marion Cooper, but I might want to...
Marion, we need a last name to go with it. If you could unmute yourself.
Yeah, do you want me to find a way to type it in?
We're fine now, I just wanted to make sure we knew who was in the minutes. Thank you, Marion. Do we have everybody else?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. Of the minutes of eight, 12, 2020.
Lance, I'd move to approve the minutes of August 12, 2020 as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Twenty-six of 2020.
I will make a motion to approve the August 26, 2020 claims for payment.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Here he is. Next I have is utility permits, I have none.
Nope.
So, secondaire road, Taylor, you're up.
We expect the road, the highway by Witten to be open later this week. He said possibly today, but we're not gonna promise that, obviously. They expect that to be open soon. And the Gifford Bridge, we're looking at the week after Labor Day.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so those are big closures right now.
Are we gonna remain, keep that two mile open until...
Yeah, we decided we'll come back to it next year. But we might be back there later this fall, patching more concrete because we know the road breaks just when we're down there moving stuff around.
And the speed limit will stay intact?
Correct. Thirty-five mile an hour for those three miles. Yep.
Okay. Anything else, first?
Not really.
And next we have is, BJ, do you have any questions?
Nope, I talked to Taylor yesterday, thank you.
So next is, we have the funding agreement for resurfacing County Highway D-55 from US 65 to S-55.
So this is just our funding agreement with the DOT. We expect to pay half of it, it'd be like $1.5 million from our Region 6 fund we share with the other four counties. Yeah, and this is to pave the highway between Hubbard and New Providence.
And we're gonna put the pavement out on the gravels as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the funding agreement 1-20-STBG-SWAP-047. It's the resurfacing...
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Here he is.
Lance, before Taylor steps away from the podium, I know last week it was, somebody asked how the budget forecast or revenue projections were, and I wondered if Taylor wanted to just give a quick synopsis of where his department is in revenue for road use tax, those estimates.
Yep, we just got a letter on Monday, I believe, from the DOT, talking about what's happened. Pretty much everything is normal, except people's sales are back to normal now, but they expect we lost about 10% for the year. And then car sales are way down. So in the end, their estimate was 85 to 90% of what you're supposed to get, which is way better than what they were projecting. Yeah, we thought we'd get a 30% loss, and now we're talking about a 10%.
Can you give us a dollar amount to that? No?
No, I, because if I sit down, calculator suppose...
No, I was just curious, yeah, I don't know.
Couple hundred thousand, I suppose.
Okay. Well, from there...
Thanks, Taylor.
Thank you.
From there, it's 9:05, and I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for the road vacation, streets and alleys outside of Steamboat Rock. Taylor, you wanna give us a little explanation of what this is again?
Yep, sure, so this was requested by Randall Shore, who owns all the properties, so obviously this is all gonna be deeded back to him after you vacate it. Unless you guys want to do it differently, but I don't know why he would. So the city of Steamboat Rock already did their portion, because it goes in the city as well. So they've already vacated it, so now it's our turn. And yeah, it just gets rid of a bunch of the old streets and alleys that at one time they thought Steamboat would need.
That only exist on paper.
Correct. Yes, it is mostly just farm field and timber right now.
So at this point...
There is a map, there was a map attached as well.
At this point, everybody has a capability to mute themselves. Is there any public comment? Any comments? One more time for any public comments. None? I could ask for a motion to come out of closed door.
Lance, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Yes, I said closed door, it was not a closed door. Any other discussion? Are you none? Roll call.
BJ?
Aye.
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 Lance?
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a resolution to vacate a county road of these streets and alleys.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution to vacate county roads, streets and alleys of Steamboat Rock.
I will second that motion.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Are you none? Roll call.
Renee?
Aye.
BJ?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is a request of approval to quick claim deed for vacated streets and alleys outside of Steamboat Rock.
I'll make a motion...
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the quick claim deed for the vacated streets and alleys outside of Steamboat Rock.
Second it?
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Quick claim deed goes to Randall Shore. Any other discussion? Or roll call?
BJ?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have Joy Ellis here from Harm and Home Publishers regarding plat books.
Thank you. Okay, what I'd like to do is be able to put the plat books back in the courthouse. We do that in several counties. We give you a front cover, so you can put a picture of the courthouse on it. And then your books are like everybody else's. There's also an opportunity for people to go online, buy it, and use another county at no cost. The cost of the books is 22, but you have to get 15.
Is that, that's the cost to the county?
Yes. The new books will be full color. Even the ones that go out to the country will be full color. So it's just an opportunity for people who want a book to be able to get them, and not have to pay me $60 and 70 cents. And I always send them to the courthouse when I get phone calls.
Would they, did they used to be mailed to farmers?
They are still.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
But, I mean, free of charge, or they pay the 60?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so you get a page in the book.
Farmers or rural residents?
Rural residents.
Rural residents, indeed.
We put a page in the book of all your officers and so forth.
Well, Joy, we come here every year, you know we print our own plat books here. And for the last few years, we haven't been purchasing yours to resell them again. Because we do print our own. And it's not that I don't want people to have yours, but I don't know why we would purchase our, if we create them ourselves in-house, why would we purchase some and sell those as well?
These do have a little bit more information than yours does, I think. We've got a list of all the residences with their city, their 911 house number, their township and section number. I think yours only has the plat information, if I'm not mistaken. These books have a directory of who lives where with their 911 house number on the map.
Okay.
If you haven't seen them for a while...
I get one every year from you.
Sure. So anyhow, but they're 22, and a minimum purchase of 15.
Is Lori on the meeting?
She, I don't think she is, it's just Sheridan on the meeting.
Okay, I was just gonna ask Lori if she has requests for those upstairs ever.
Let's go with Cheryl.
Okay.
I don't think she's gonna be able to talk.
Okay.
After her computer has a mic.
Okay.
Well, from there, I guess we could all approach Lori, if we don't have to act on it today.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, you know, if people come up and they request that book over ours, I don't...
I send through four people a year to the courthouse.
Yeah?
Yeah, and someone asked me, and I'm not sure who asked me, to be sure to be here. So, that's why I'm here.
Okay. Yeah, I would maybe like to talk to Lori first, and, or Cheryl, and find out...
What their preference was.
Yeah.
That sounds like a good plan to me, Renee and Lance.
Does anybody have any more questions for? Thank you. And I suspect we will have this on for next week as an action.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll wait for the motion, though. The next item is discuss with possible action on plat books.
I would make a motion to table this decision until next week.
I would second that, Lance.
Moved and tabled, are you discussion? Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Next is something new to us, which is an appointment of elected officials to nomination papers objection panel. I got sent a email, an objection has been filed against the nomination certificate for Don Primus. Under Iowa Code 43.243B, the chairperson of the Harden County Board of Supervisors appoints three members to the objection panel. Those three persons must be elected, county elected officials, and they must not be the person whose ineligibility is in question. I've made this appointment. The appointment is Dave McDaniel, Lori Cadner, and Renee McClellan. I would have liked to pick a person from both parties, obviously I don't have that option. I talked to Auditor Laura Jessica, who is opposed also in this election. So I didn't think it would be fair, let alone that she would be the, or in charge of the elections. So I didn't think it would be that fair to put that on her as well, doing both sides of this. Otherwise, she would have been a candidate running as an independent. I also chose it to keep it males and female on this commission, or on this panel. That's what I've done. Darrell, do you wanna speak on it?
On your appointments?
Any more to this? Those were the appointments I...
Right, since you asked, I guess.
I don't know how much we can say about it.
Yeah, and this doesn't require any board action, because the code says that it shall be appointed by the chair, and I think it's fair how you've tried to balance, you know, party interests and gender equity, and also considering who's up for election this cycle and who's not, and trying to balance those three things. So I think, I think your appointments are fair, and as fair as they can be, I guess, under the circumstances.
And Dave is up, but he is unopposed.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And like you said, we're kind of plowing new ground here, it doesn't sound like any of you have ever done this before, and I have not either, so, kind of been trying to figure out how this is going to be procedurally, how it's gonna play out, and whether to keep it formal, somewhat informal. And I did prepare some proposed guidelines for the panel on how to conduct the hearing. The hearing is set for Monday at 1 o'clock here. Those proposed guidelines, procedures have been provided to the objecting party and Mr. Primus. So we're trying to just make it fair, give everybody notice as to how this is, you know, we intend this to be conducted, and make it as efficient and as orderly as we can, and the panel will deliberate in public after they close the fact-finding portion of the hearing and make a decision. I understand time is of the essence, it's not like they can go back and deliberate, you know, for days and then come back with a decision. So I think they'll do their deliberation right here in public after the fact-finding portion is closed. That way we can get finalized the ballot, so that they can be sent off to the printer, and we don't, you know, delay our election process by any unnecessary delays. Let's contribute to it at this time, unless you guys got questions about it.
I don't, I did my part.
You're done.
I guess one thing is, I don't, I don't want people to flood these people with questions, it's not a comfortable panel to be on, I would assume.
Yeah, they're, the panel is, I mean, they're doing the fact-finding, but they're also, you know, kind of, you know, I mean, well, they're like a jury. And they should be treated like that, they shouldn't be pestered with a lot of questions and provided a lot of extraneous information. They wanna base their decision on the information they receive at the hearing. So, yeah, they should just be respected and not bothered by the public, or the press, or the parties, so they can do their job as fairly as they can, and not be influenced or swayed by the political pressures. I mean, we're a small county, and everybody knows each other, you know, we shouldn't be overly motivated by political motivations, and so just try to keep it as fair and respectful as we can.
Good.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the CARES funding project for community services. Is Lynn on there?
Lynn, can you unmute yourself?
Yep, I'm, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I prepared a memo to you guys, and as I explained in there, that some of the CARES money that the federal government passed down to the state, the governor allocated 30 million of that money to mental health regions. So each of the regions in Iowa got an amount based on a per capita. So the CICS region is actually gonna get, or has already received the check, I believe, for the 3.2 million. And we're looking at three different ways to use that money. One is, we're, we've already, letters have already gone out to all providers and schools, all mental health providers and schools in the, in the region, with an RFP for grants up to 10,000 each. We're also looking at separate proposals for bigger projects. And then the third, the third thing we're doing is looking at our local offices and things that we could do that could tie into the COVID money to make our offices more sanitary and COVID-friendly for the, for the public and for our staff. So we've already done several things, we have the new, you know, machine here in the lobby, that everybody who comes in, we do the temperature, you know, we ask, we have questionnaire that we do. We ask for people that, that are coming in, that, you know, that could be questionable. We do ask them, we can ask them to wear a mask, and if we do that, we also wear a mask, but we don't wear a mask all the time. But what I was proposing in this memo, and I've taken this to the admin team of our region, and it's been initially approved, would be to take the restroom, that's the very small, if anybody's been in our building, you've seen that little dinky, I think it's about two feet square restroom, that's very, you know, it's hard to sanitize a place like that just because of the size. And of course, it's old, so we would take that and look at possibly doing what they did upstairs, and taking the room next to it, making that a full-size restroom with, that could be handicapped accessible, and have like touch-free, you know, towel dispenser, hopefully touch-free faucets, things like that. Another thing we'd like to do is just install a small water heater under the cupboard in the kitchenette area, because we're unable to get any hot water at all on this floor, and that would at least allow one, one area that if people wanted to really, you know, wash their hands with hot water, or, or if we need to clean other things, we've got that, that hot water, and I don't think they're very, not real expensive. And then the other thing would be just some touchless hand sanitizers, which I think, I think we've already taken care of that, I believe. I just asked Michelle to go ahead and order a few of those to put up on our floor, in the hallway. We, I know we've got one in the lobby, but I think we're, we're gonna get two more to put just in our hallway. And then I know that the county receives some CARES money also, so the other thing I proposed was, was if, if we could switch out the lobby doors to a FOB system like what's in the courthouse, and I was hoping maybe that county CARES money could be used for that. I don't know that I can pay that out of the regional funds, because it's not really a, you know, it's really serving all the offices in this building, which includes the county attorney and, and several, you know, other offices, veterans affairs, and then the downstairs offices, so. But those were the projects, so the ones that I would propose that we would use the regional funding for would be the restroom, and the water heater, and the hand sanitizer machines. And I, I talked to Jody, and I know we'd have to get some prices, so I don't know, cost-wise, I know bathroom can be pretty expensive to redo, especially when you put some special equipment in there. But I think it would be well worth it, and I don't, and I see this as an opportunity to improve that situation, and improve it using, you know, those other funds, rather than having to pay for it all through the county.
Hey, I got Jody sitting here, Jody, did you have any comments, concerns?
I just went ahead and looked at it this morning. The door is a 32-inch door, you have to have 36 for a handicap accessible. But the one on the top, it's also 32. So legally, we don't have a handicap accessibility bathroom in the building.
Okay.
So if we would happen to do this one, one of the things we'll have to do is put in a 36-inch door. And then we'll, we will comply for the building and have a handicap bathroom.
On the main floor?
On the main floor. But that's all it requires, one in a building.
Right.
So, and that room will work.
Okay.
Okay.
Verify that it will, that we can tap into the existing sewer line from that room.
Lynn, how much funding did you say we have for Harden County for, for these projects? Did you...
Well, it's, regionally, we have 3.2 million, but, so we're not really splitting it out per county. You know, we're offering the...
So if we approve this, you would then go out, take for bids, and then get back to us before you do any construction, making sure that all is paid through, through the region? CARES act, correct?
Well, I think Jody would probably do that part, right, or I can, but I, as property manager, I would imagine he would, but, I mean, yeah, I guess we could get back to you with a figure, I think basically I got from the admin team, and we're having another meeting today at 10 o'clock. Again, just based all about this CARES stuff, but, and I can, you know, depending on what you guys decide, I can share that message. But as long as you guys are okay with it, I'll get confirmation again today, and let them know that you guys gave preliminary approval, and that we're gonna get those costs, but I was pretty much given the green light to go ahead, and, and the board, the governing board, which BJ sits on, pretty much because of the time constraints and everything, gave that to the CEO and to the admin team to, to allocate those funds as needed. And then there'll be a report that'll go back to the board, of course, but, so I think as long as you guys are okay with it, I think it'll, it'll move forward, and Jody could get quotes, or I can, we can work that out.
Actually, you more or less just need to get approval from, from the, your board to get the funds in order to do these three projects you have bulleted here, is that correct? That we don't really have to...
I don't, you don't have to...
Renee, if I could...
You're not asking...
So, well, since we're modifying county properties to do the ADA complacency, the hot water heater, and the hand sanitizer installation, we need, CICS needs the county's approval to make those modifications to our facilities, because there are facilities.
At your expense?
At our expense, yes. And we, we did talk about this, and it's gonna be done on a case-by-case basis from the CICS level. Every county has different needs, and so the governing board is looking at those, and will send those to the admin team and stuff for final approval, but this is a project that I really believe in, it adds some functionality, and, and actually the ADA complacency is a huge issue. But the bathroom water heater, I was shocked when I heard that there was no hot water in that bathroom, or limited. So when we're talking about hygiene, it's hard to wash your hands with warm soapy water for at least 20 seconds without hot water.
Yeah, okay, well, I just wanted to verify that.
Yep.
The only thing that I think we would need to do is, on the doors that, that he's requesting the county pay for, you know, due to we own the building or whatever, that I would like to get bids before we, you know, do any approving of that, but...
So you're saying...
I think if we could act on them...
You wanna leave the doors out, yes.
Right, I think we need to get bids on that before we approve or not approve that. But the other things, we're not paying for, so if we, if he, if they need county approval, I think we can act on that, for sure.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the CARES funds for the projects for the... Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the CARES funds for the projects for the community services, including the bathroom, ADA complacency issues minus the door, hot water heater and hand sanitizer stations.
Um, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? When you say minus the door, you're talking about the door locks, not the door of the bathroom.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Ain't no more? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Most carries. Now we have his request to pay mileage reimbursement to wellness program presenter from Health Plan Trust. I guess who's to explain how this happened or how, why the request is here?
Lynn, did you want to handle that?
Well, it just, we had our finance wellness pillar speaker came from Clarion, or no, from Webster City. And she didn't charge anything, but she did ask for mileage. So it's just, I, I, I think Becca has the bill. I think it's fifty, fifty some dollars. And it would just be to pay her for her mileage to come and speak.
And this was open to all entities, not just Harden County employees, correct?
Right, yep. We had city people there. And some of the, anybody, anybody that's on our, on our insurance, it was open too. So we had people from several different groups.
And we were aware of this when we initially started this, that mileage was not included for these things.
Yes, yep, yep. The proposal came to the Wellness Committee and I know we, we've talked about that there. So.
Lee, this is the first time mileage has been applied since we've started also.
For wellness, it is, yes.
And Lance, Becca just messaged that Beth Miller from Bowman Miller approved this expense, but just wanted the board to formally approve it for the record.
Okay. Before we make that motion, I think we should also give an allowance to as to what they can spend with the year without our, any more approval. Do we want to allow up to two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars? How many times do you think you'll meet Lynn or need them to come down?
Well, this was just a one-time thing and I don't think we have anything else this year that would require any, I mean, other than the project that we're going to talk about here in a few minutes. But, you know, if you can get this one approved and then maybe for next year, if we decide to do this wellness again, you guys would want to do something upfront then that would allow so much to be spent for the events. I think this is the only, we've not had any other expense related to any of the other wellness county sponsored things that we've done, so.
Well, I could entertain a motion.
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve the mileage reimbursement to the Wellness Program Presenter to be paid from the Health Plan Trust.
I will second that.
Seconded, any discussion?
Yeah. I was able to attend one of the sessions and I thought it was very informative and educational. I think it was a great use of the plan's money.
I agree.
Any other discussion? No more, all in favor, say aye.
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 Here is. Now we have is Wellness Committee Appreciation Event Proposal.
And, oh.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna, I, I sent you guys a, kind of a summary and this was developed through the Wellness Committee. But since you guys did that thing at SAC Box last year, that was kind of the employee appreciation, we looked at combining kind of that type thing along with wellness. So what, what you see is basically we're looking at having a lunch. And I think Renee and has maybe at least had some preliminary discussions with BJ and some other people about, about that. So that would be an appreciation thing for county employees. It would be from eleven to two at the fairgrounds. We wouldn't close offices. We would just stagger lunchtime so that people could come and go. And then along with that, we would have a health wellness fair. At the same time, we would have tables that would include topics such as mental health, retirement, nutrition, and some other things with agencies and, and different individuals doing that. And then the third part would be, we would have the immunizations available that we've done. And part of this thinking was that we thought we might get better response to those if we combine it with some of these other things. So this would be open so that it would be anybody that qualifies for the immunizations. But then they're also going to, and Deanna is working with the nurses to also offer a few other times that they would have the immunizations available. But this would be a time when a county employee could come, get a free lunch, learn more about wellness, and then also get their immunization, their flu shot. So they expect, I, I think the reason you guys would need to act on it is first of all to, to endorse the plan, but also because you can see there the, the cost of the shots, the influenza, T-DAP, hepatitis, pneumonia. And based on what we've, what we did last year, the prices are the same. Last year, the total cost was forty-one hundred and twenty dollars. So if we had the same number of people participate, it would be that cost. But, you know, we could have a few more or we, I suppose we could have less participate or we could have more people get certain shots. The one thing we don't have on there is the shingles, which we did talk about because I think there's a new shingles vaccine that's supposed to be a lot better. But I think it's pretty high cost. So I guess we didn't include it last year, so we didn't put it on the list for this year. So as long as the, as far as the cost, I think you'd have the cost for the immunizations. And then whatever cost that would be related to the meal. But I know that they talked about possibly using some of the pop fund for the, for the food. So I don't know, Renee or BJ, would there be other costs involved with the meal?
I think they'd be minimal, Lynn.
Okay.
Talked to, I know the assessor's office has the pop fund money. So I haven't really talked to them about using that, but I know we have used that in the past. So I'll verify that with them too.
There's plenty in that too.
Okay.
And we're looking at September twenty-second. So that's, you know, we'd like to get this, if we're going to do it, we'd like to get going so that we can get a flyer ready and get that out to all the employees and the other entities about, and. Cause.
And the, I would like to just clarify that the, the whole wellness program for that day is for all the entities, but the meal is only for Harden County employees.
Right.
I was going to point that out. Also, I don't believe county funding should participate in the food. I believe that should be donated. Whether it comes from the pop fund or, but by, by any means, it should not come from, well, from the wellness or the county. I, I would like that in two separate motions. I mean, I, I think it's a great fair. I think that all entities are invited. It's, but if we're going to provide a meal, I don't believe that we provide meals to our employees.
No.
With tax dollars or, or the wellness dollars unless we're going to provide the meal for everybody.
I agree. And I guess I was just assuming that we would use the pop fund money.
Right.
I haven't asked, but I don't know why we wouldn't be able to. We always have in the past.
So I.
Cause that's just strictly employee.
And that's the other problem.
Some people are good, oh, you can't eat.
Well, we'd probably just put a sign up and say meal for county, county employees only. Unless we provide the meal maybe down here after they've been out there. I mean, I, that's something we could maybe talk about too.
Well, I, I think we could ask Beth instead of having the donated food or either donate for everybody. I, I agree with Jody. It's tough to serve a meal to one person, the other person standing there looking at you. Either provide to all through the wellness plan, if, if Beth allows that. Because it is a fair and a, for immunizations for all entities. Or provide the meal at a separate time. It, it's a tough call.
How do we do it?
We only.
It was only county, it was only county employees. We didn't include the other entities.
But if we're going to do this.
Did the county pay for it?
No.
No, the pop fund did. Yeah, it was potluck.
So, or we.
You could do something like that.
Or, yeah, that's, yes. Provide a potluck scenario where the cities or the other organizations could provide food as well and everybody can eat.
Sounds like we're.
I think there was a concern about potluck in the, with COVID and stuff going on right now.
You bring that up, yes.
Yeah.
Instead, I would like to get clarification from Beth and maybe regroup and, and take care of this next week when we have a firm opinion from the auditor.
I would agree. And maybe if we have to, we'll just poo poo the meal and just do the wellness.
Yeah. So Lance, I'd make a motion to table the Wellness Committee Appreciation Event Proposal until next week.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We had it all. Any other?
Yeah, I think, I think we're all in favor of doing it and promoting the wellness. We just need the clarification from Beth Miller to make sure that we're doing everything so it doesn't come back to haunt us later.
Correct. Other discussion?
Well, it doesn't do much good to have a, a meeting out there. If we're promoting only a few people to be here in the courthouse at a time and people hear that all the county employees are out at the youth building having lunch. All sixty or seventy of us all in one room. I don't think that's going to go very well.
We're, I think we were talking about having it outside.
Yeah, you'd eat outside.
So it'd be outside. The only thing would be we'd have maybe use the building if it rained or we could use the cattle barn or something. I mean, I don't, but we were talking, it was going to be planned to be outside.
Trying to point out what's going to see, split the venue, right?
Well, that's why we did it from eleven to two, so that we don't have everybody coming at one time. They would have F an hour or whatever, but they would be able to come, kind of come and go.
We have enough probably. Comment. A little long time to stir it up some more.
Is there any other discussion? There ain't no more? All in favor, say aye.
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 Here is. Next we have is a change of staff property management.
I will make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of the Assistant Property Management Employee, Dave Corcoran, effective eight twenty of twenty.
I will second that.
Seconded, any discussion? There ain't no more? All in favor, say aye.
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 Next I have is a request to State of Iowa, Consider Harden County in FEMA Declaration for Narico Event of eight ten twenty twenty. Thomas?
The governor did the federal declaration request. Harden County was left out of the declaration, individual and public assistance money. And so I've sent a request down to our Homeland Security to include Harden County in that. I have more information as soon as I sent that, they, there were several emails came to my inbox asking for damage reports and more information. And so the assessments been done, home, home. The public assistance side has been completed. I went out and drove the county roads and got pictures into the app for all of the, or most of the tree damage and debris that would need to be removed. And then Taylor put together numbers for signs and what he thought it would cost for cleaning up the debris. And then I've been through Union and done a bigger project on assessment of the homes. And I have another letter here fulfilling Jim Grandquist's request from the Recovery Division on more information for the homes and for the public assistance. So we're still working on that. I anticipate that we're going to be in that declaration. They told me the other day that the Midland, Midland and Grundy County REC, I think, already had almost sixty thousand in damages that they were going to claim out of Harden County. And our threshold is sixty-seven. So with secondary roads and conservation, I've got conservation's information here. They're looking at another twenty thousand in debris removal. And Taylor's was twenty-four, twenty-five thousand, somewhere in there for debris removal and sign replacement. And so we're just moving forward on that.
And Alliant's not in there yet?
Alliant is a private for-profit company.
Okay.
So under public assistance, only the cooperatives are eligible. Any profit, any for-profit company is not eligible for public assistance. It has to be, it has to be a government entity or certain nonprofit entities can apply for public assistance.
So you're requesting that we sign off on this?
Yes. I'm, whether you sign off on it or whether you just say you're in, I mean, consensus that we're good with going forward with reports from secondary roads and from conservation. Taylor talked about, it doesn't, so let me clarify that it does not mean that a department has to go through the paperwork of dealing with FEMA and all of the process because sometimes that's more cost than the project itself. And so, but what it does do is that, for instance, the town of Union is going to have eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand in debris removal costs. So they're figured into this and I've already sent that number down to the state. But because Harden County has a threshold to meet per capita of sixty-seven thousand, then every entity that we add into that makes that number and the information that goes to FEMA more accurate so that we're more likely to get the declaration from the Fed. Okay? Does that make sense?
Okay.
So how do you guys want to word that?
I will make a motion to approve the request to the State of Iowa to consider Harden County in the FEMA Declaration for the Dray Show Event, August tenth, twenty twenty, to include the affected departments of Harden County and the affected communities, towns of, of county.
Does it all represent your point?
There's a motion?
Okay, I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? There ain't no discussion, roll call.
Renee. Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye.
Aye.
Most carries. Next is the Emergency Operations Center Building Water Line bids. I know we have Jody here. Jody, you've been through them. It's water lines going into the Bay Area.
Right.
Can you, can you come up for us, Jody, so? Thanks. Options on the bid, one with insurance, one with that, or insulation. The one without your recommendation.
Right. And it also had the option of copper or bags.
Okay.
So when we decide to go with bags.
Okay.
It's a little cheaper.
It's a little cheaper. I don't think we really need to insulate it. So.
It's a heated building, and it's also going to be an air-conditioned building by the time.
Okay.
So I think we can just, the bid without insulation would be insufficient.
With packs.
With packs.
Any questions? And this would go under your department as far as an expense?
I think so, probably.
Okay. BJ, any questions? Did you hear it?
No, I, I read through the proposals, and I agree with Jody's thoughts. So I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the water line installation at the EOC building as Jody proposed.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This is going with packs with no insulation, correct? Okay.
Is there, in the wintertime, if power went out, there's a generator? So.
Right. We're good to go.
And along with that, that money will come out of your budget. Any other discussion? There are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There is. Go ahead, update. Thomas, you're right.
So we've done, if you've looked at the information from the state of Iowa, they said that Harden County and Franklin County are two of the hot counties. Last week, maybe yesterday, can't remember when my email came from Rocky, but we had twenty-one cases in seven days, so that's three cases per day. When you put it in one number, it looks a little bit unwieldy, but patients a day getting COVID. We have had meetings already, so the we're looking at getting the submission for the public assistance side of our COVID expenses. I've gotten back what Public Health has already reimbursed through IDPH. And I'll be submitting what the county has spent, and we should see some reimbursement for the expenses up to this point. And then we also had a meeting yesterday. Rocky, Becca, Renee, and Dave and I met on the Iowa Cares money that comes to the county. And that's two hundred and thirteen thousand, I believe. And, and the initial part of that says right off the top that twenty-five percent of public safety is for, and the wording is, for convenience, please figure twenty-five percent of your public safety budget to be COVID-related and submit that for this Iowa Cares Act. So that would be, and we looked at the numbers yesterday, we're going to be really close to that two hundred and thirteen thousand when we take what the public safety budget is. It's the sheriff, the jail, the administration, the whole thing. Twenty-five percent of that budget is maybe even more than two hundred and thirteen thousand, but we're not going to submit more than that because of the amount of documentation and paperwork that you need over that amount. If you just claim that amount, that's, that's like three items that you have to submit. If you claim over that twenty-five percent, you have ten times the amount of documentation and paperwork that you have to do. So Becca's working on that. And I'm working on the public assistance side to get reimbursement back to the county for the expenses we have in COVID.
And at this time, you don't feel that, that extra or that ten times the amount is at the threshold to do the work for?
No, because it
It doesn't meet the economic threshold.
Yeah, it's very time-consuming, and Becca's already going to spend a lot of time, and Dave's, one of Dave's staff are going to spend a lot of time, because we have to list every employee. You have to break it down by every employee and what their wages are, and then take twenty-five percent of that, but you have to list all the employees and go through the wages and benefits and all nine yards. So that already is a lot to get.
But it's not off the table if it doesn't see that, just at this time, it's not there?
Well, it's, but the justification for it, so
Okay.
The feds say that twenty-five percent is automatically figured for COVID. But it already is going to exceed, we may already exceed the two hundred and thirteen thousand, which we
Get.
There's no, we aren't going to get more than two hundred and thirteen thousand.
Okay.
Does that make sense? But the threshold, the, the amount we get, we may already be over what that amount is.
Okay. Any other questions? BJ?
Nope, that, that formula sounds very familiar.
Thank you.
Yep.
Here I will go to public comments. You are able to unmute yourself.
Lance, this is Donna.
Donna, go ahead.
Um, I would like to point out that the first five months of this pandemic brought one hundred positive cases, approximately the first five months, brought one hundred positive cases to this county. That count has more than doubled in just over five weeks. This county is failing. I would also like to say that as a registered voter, not registered as Democrat or Republican, this morning I heard a top Republican say that these are ordinary circumstances with the virus pandemic. An extraordinary means must be taken. Considering that both Democrat and Republican parties have held online conventions throughout the country at county, state, and national levels, there is a, this attempt to delegitimize one of the candidates here seems rather petty. And as each and every one of you supervisors have said in the past, let's let the voters decide. Wouldn't you say so, BJ?
Yes, ma'am.
There any other public comments? There are no other public comments. I will go to other business.
I guess I would like to make some comments. First of all, on this wellness appreciation event. I guess I don't think that looks very good to the public that the county people eat and the public doesn't. I just don't think that looks very good. It kind of shows to the public that the people that work for the county are a little bit better than the public, and may I remind everybody that works for the county, we pay your salaries. So I don't think you guys should be eating at all.
So you don't eat, Pauline?
Um, we don't, that's not what this is about. This is a well
I'm, I'm gonna cut this off. Pauline, we, we, I don't think you understood what was said when we were talking about it. What it was, was that the food, and this is why it was tabled, would be donated by whoever for the employees or the people of the health plan. Not, not the general public to come in and eat. That was never the purpose of this. This is a wellness plan. And that's what we were discussing. This is why it tabled. I think a lot of it was based on the agreement of kind of what you said. Was why are the county employees working and where the city of Eldora, or eating where the city of Eldora cannot when they come to the same wellness plan? That was the discussion. But I'm, I'm gonna cut it off because I, I think there was some confusion in there, but it'll be brought again to another meeting.
Our committee will be meeting again to discuss, discuss the rest of, or discuss this after today's meeting.
So are there any other public comments? Back to other business.
I have no other business.
I have nothing further, Lance.
That's for Germaine.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? There are none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye.